Welcome everybody. I'm so pleased you can join us for this webinar on modelling an integrated system for obesity and weight management. My name's Claire Cordo, I lead the healthcare team here at Simulate. And I'm absolutely delighted that David Gilding from the Public Health Information and Intelligence Department at Nottinghamshire County Council can talk to us about the modelling work he's done. I've known David for a little while, I think it's true to say, David, we were starting, I think, together on our simulation and modelling journeys using Scenario Generator back when it was first launched. And David does some fantastic work on modelling all kinds of things, including downgrading of emergency departments, looking at walk-in centres. And the work that he's done on obesity is so timely because this is such a major issue for today. And I've lost count of the number of times that people have asked me how they might approach a modelling project for obesity and weight management, trying to understand the impact on cost, the impact of prevention. So I was delighted to hear that David had done some work in this area and was able to talk to us about it. David, if you can just move to the next slide.
Okay.
Thank you. That's just explaining who we are again, so if you can go on to the next one. So just a couple of bits of housekeeping, people who've joined us will know this very well. We've actually muted you for the period of the webinar, so just to make sure that there's no noise which will stop you hearing effectively. If you want to ask any questions, we'd be delighted if you do so. If you can use the chat panel on the bottom right-hand side of your screen, just type in your message, we'll pick it up and we'll put it to David. We'll be taking questions at the end, so we'll probably leave it to them. If we get too many questions, we can't answer all of them, then we will get back to you. And we have a LinkedIn site for people who don't know called Simulate in Health, and we always post all questions on there and answers so that people can see them. Finally, the recording will be available on simulatehealthcare.com, so if you want colleagues to have a look at the webinar or share it with other people, the slides will be there as well, then please feel free to do so. So thank you to everyone for joining. I'm sure you will find this a really interesting presentation. And David, can I pass over to you now?
Thank you, Claire. Okay, I just wanted to pop back a bit. I credited Anne Pridgen on this. Anne is the Policy Lead for Obesity and Weight Management in the county council where I work. She was also involved very closely in developing the model with me, so she's not presenting, but I wanted to make a point of mentioning her. So we'll start. So Nottinghamshire County, we're in the middle of England. Population is between about 780,000 people. It's a very mixed county, some areas are very affluent, others are much more deprived. Parts of the north of the county, Bassett Law up here, if I get the highlighter. So areas up here can be very rural, parts of New York and Shire, parts of Rochdale are very rural, parts of Mansfield, Ashfield, New York and Shire are ex coal mining areas. Nottinghamshire City isn't part of our area, but there's a conurbation around there that's suburban really, so it's quite a mixed county. Overall, we're pretty representative of England, but there's a mixed picture within the county, a bit of geography to situate you. The impetus for doing this work came when the public health within England changed in as part of the enacted parliament in 2012. And we actually moved over to local authorities in 2013 from primary care trusts, and they were NHS organisations that were around commissioning services, we didn't provide any. The Act came along, and then, as I said, in April 2013, local public health, part of local public health transferred to local government. And we brought along with us that responsibility to commission work around obesity and weight management. I love this diagram, it's from the King's Fund, which is a think tank charity based in London, but they've tried to summarise the whole of the new NHS from April 13. We're situated at the bottom left element, so we're in local government here, we're appointed in local authority of public health, but we relate quite closely to public health, England, the national body, and we oversee health and wellbeing boards, that's NHS, elected councillors, elected members and others overseeing the health and wellbeing of the population, in this case Nottinghamshire. But in terms of who commissions elements of services for obesity and weight management, then yes, we have inherited some of those responsibilities in local government, but also clinical commissioning groups, they're groups who organise and run local primary care, they're general practitioner-led, so they're clinician-led, and that was one of the big changes that came with the NHS reformulation in 2012/13. But also, there's a part with a national NHS body called specialist commissioning. And as we'll see later, they actually commission bariatric surgery, what a part of the pathway. And within all that, we wanted to actually recommission in services competitively, so put out to competitive tender. So, summary of that, we want to adopt a whole system approach, so in the past, as we'll see in a minute, it's a very dispersed, very non-integrated system. We wanted to go out with one tender for prevention and all levels of intervention, and we also include the whole population aged five and over. So we're going for a very inclusive, very broad approach that made sense to individuals. We also wanted to focus on pregnant women, because obesity within pregnancy has long-term consequences, both for the mother and for any children. And we want an outcomes-based approach, so a provider getting better outcomes, more health outcomes, more health improvement for individuals would basically get more money. But as I said, parts of the systems are commissioned through national specialist functions, but also local GPs working together. All of those had implications for the modelling and simulation, I'll go into the modelling questions we try to answer in a moment. And as far as we know, we're still the only local authority that's trying to commission the whole integrated pathway, not just parts of it and elements of it. So the whole systems approach, these are kind of made-up comments people might have actually made before we recommissioned the service. So we've got everyone from GP saying to individuals, you need to lose so many kilos, but who can I send someone on to? We've got specialist treatment, so that's people with particularly high need in terms of weight loss or maintaining weight loss, but people are saying, well, actually, who's responsible for that? At one point, no one was sure, whether it was us in local authority or clinical commissioning groups, and if we do anything, who's actually going to pay for it? We've got community-type groups, so I'm sure most people are familiar with Weight Watchers, Living World, Rose McCollough, often group work, meeting in local venues, and do a good job. There have been papers published to say they actually help people lose weight. But again, people access those on a non-hoc basis. Exercise referral schemes, so we, in the primary care trust, we used to commission some smaller local authorities, but not all, to actually refer people to go on and do exercise. But again, that service wasn't consistent, wasn't integrated. And then for bariatric surgery, at the other end of the scale, people who need often stomach stapling or gastric bands, they were clearly saying, the services were clearly saying, demand's going to be much greater than capacity. Again, and again, who's going to pay? That specialist, national commissioning, after the changes rapidly realised they were running out of money, there was very little funding to go around. So even if we made a pathway to push people through, when and if people needed surgery, who was actually going to pay for it? Would the money be there? And then in the middle of that, in public health, we like to think we take a wider view, we were noticing rising prevalence of overweight and obesity. As we've just seen, the services were dispersed and disjointed, and there's very little system leadership. And we think about the long-term consequences, not just the financial consequences for the next year or two, but actually long-term health consequences of obesity, overweight and obese. So we actually said, right, we're going to stop all this nonsense, we're going to do that commission and commission a whole system approach. And certainly, credit to Anne and Barbara, the consultants in public health, for actually taking that approach. It wasn't necessarily an easy thing to do, but I think we will agree, in retrospect, it was the right thing to do. It was harder, but it was the right thing to do. So this is a, excuse me, this is a, the model that we came up with, a conceptual model that, well, I didn't, Anne and Barbara came up with, really to say, we need to look at the whole population. So that's everything from a universal activity-led approach, diet approach, building on using green space where available, leisure services, working with food businesses, working with schools, transport, workplaces, so a very holistic overall approach. And then specifically targeting and commissioning healthy lifestyle activities, and that ranges from lower-level healthy eating interventions, getting people to cook and eat together, physical activity, behaviour, CBT-type talking therapies, and brief intervention. Higher at the level of need, there are weight management services, that's more often one-to-one, but some group work, looking in more depth at how to modify diet or behaviour, promote activity. And then some people need psychological or drug pharmacological intervention. And then, as I said, at a very extreme end, some people will actually need bariatric surgery, they have a stomach stapled or gastric bands to actually restrict how much food they can take in and lose weight that way. And we wanted to do the whole of the system, despite the fact that the local authority where I work is actually only responsible for the bits in red. So we wanted to look at the whole system for the reasons I've said. Just interesting to note on this, the people who've been in bariatric surgery, the responsibility of the people who do that surgery, often an NHS provider for two years, but then they fall back into the local authority system, so that's again something we had to model. So immediately, we're talking quite long time scales in this, which was a challenge in terms of modelling. I don't think I've worked on a project where you need to think in terms of years instead of months of a flow-through system. Okay, so modelling challenges we had. We wanted to estimate need, and that's both in children, young people, adults aged 18 and over, and as I said, concentrating on pregnant women. We wanted to build a NICE compliant model. NICE is now the National Institute for Care Excellence, and they change their name occasionally to reflect their broadening responsibilities, but they're the national body who give guidance and, well, not regulation, but guidance about treatment and about how to intervene with communities. We wanted to make the model broadly NICE compliant, but also questions about, we've only got a fixed amount of money for this service, so if we're going out to tender, we need to commission an affordable number of clients, given there's no precedent for this kind of pathway, how far will our money go? That kind of question. And then, as I said, the issues around time scale. So it's immediately apparent that clients are likely to be in this system for certainly more than months, maybe even two or three years. And that could, that might have implications for the provider, the person who wins, the organisation that wins the tender, their stability, payments and cash flow, and also arrangements at the end of a contract. If you've got, if the contract ends and there are people in treatment who might need another year or two treatment, how are you going to end the contract effectively? And then going back to the public health viewpoint, how good a service do we need for how many people to actually affect the population's health and start seeing decreases in obesity, overweight in the wider population? So they're the kind of modelling questions that we set out to answer. Quite big, chunky questions, I'm sure you'll agree. Terms of estimating need, in the UK, in England, we don't actually have counts of obese and overweight people, we don't know, we can't count how many people there are. So we've needed to estimate from national and regional surveys and estimate the number locally. And then there's an interesting dynamic, as we'll see in a moment, about obesity at one end, but also how that translates into health need and the effect that being obese plus other factors might have on health. So we needed to think about that as well. And what we wanted was an overall idea of scale, how many people in each area need this service. So we looked at trends from our national surveys. Interestingly, the, so males on the right, males on the left, sorry, and females on the right, and this is the trends from 1993 to 2011 was the latest data at this point. And then we've projected forwards for those who are overweight, obese or morbidly obese, so overweight to BMI of between 25 and 30. Males obese is a BMI, body mass index, of up to 40, and morbidly obese is a BMI of over 40. So we can see clear trends in males and females, the overweight seem to be levelling off, maybe even falling slightly, but the percentage of population for males and females who are obese and morbidly obese continues to increase. And that brings increased health need. So we've used those figures for our local populations and started to get some idea of how those numbers might increase. Fairly standard public health intelligence stuff. We did similar work for children, I'm going to focus on adults throughout this presentation, but we did parallel work with children and pregnant women as well. Considering those numbers in terms of health risk was quite interesting. In the middle of, we're just at the start of this procurement exercise, some data came out actually looking at the factors that affect health risk. In particular, waist circumference, so it's not just how much fat somebody has on their body, particularly, it's where that fat is. And waist circumference, adiposity around the waist is a big factor. As are comorbidities, so existing health conditions, in particular, things like hypertension, hypertension and diabetes, they increase the health risk, multiply the health risk of being obese to quite some extent. So we ran those numbers, looked at those numbers and applied them to Nottinghamshire population. So broadly, on the left, on the left here, these are numbers who, people who have those comorbidities, and on the right, people who don't. And we split the population into three broad categories. So we've got, some people might be underweight, a few, 2,000 out of 780-odd. Then there's, well, the adults rather, normal weight, and then overweight and obese categories I mentioned, so obesity up to 35, then up to 40. And we put them into three categories, or NICE have three categories, so people that increased high risk or very high risk of future health issues because of these combined factors, obesity, comorbidity and waist circumference. The bit that really surprised us was how this changed the numbers at risk. Originally, we thought, yes, people who are obese might have some health risk, people who are more obese have a higher health risk, and then people who are actually morbidly obese of a 40 would have the highest need of all. And in fact, there are about 16,000 people who, we estimate, who have that very high body mass index. We might have concentrated in the past on them to actually offer services to. What really surprised us was the numbers I've circled in red here, so even at an overweight BMI, which about 60% of our population are overweight, we're picking up very large numbers, so 50,000, 60,000 are people who have comorbidities, overweight and have some level of health risk. Even if you're not hypertensive, there might be 130,000 people, and that really floored us. And in the end, we realised that we could actually have over 350,000 people, half the total population, well over half the adult population, who might actually be eligible for a service like we were providing. It put an idea of scale for us, and really, as we'll see later, what we're providing is a bit of a drop in the ocean, but we're going to go ahead. But that's very vast numbers, big numbers of people who might actually need this kind of service. Interesting challenge to actually model a hypothetical pathway, one that has never been developed, and one that, as far as we know, doesn't exist. So we started from the bottom up, we didn't go a big top-down conceptual model and then go into the detail, we actually went from bottom up. So we looked in detail at the NICE guidance, and that's publicly available, you can go and find it and see what NICE recommends at each stage. And then we developed two main pathways, one for children, and then one for adults, as I'll show you in a moment, and a much simpler one around pregnancy. We did similar work to estimate numbers of pregnant women in different obesity BMI groups, but it's a much simpler pathway. One other factor we wanted to do was, because this was a performance-based contract, we wanted to be able to identify successes in terms of successful outcomes for individuals. And again, we tried to take a holistic approach, that's not just about losing weight, but it is around improved dietary intake, improving physical activity for each individual. A big factor on mental health and wellbeing, there's an interesting connection between your mental health, your wellbeing, how good you feel, and your willingness to actually change behaviour and move on. Sustained weight loss is an obvious one, and again, we're thinking longer term, not just over a few weeks, but weight loss over the period of a year. So again, as before, we're thinking much longer term. And appropriate weight maintenance or loss for children and young people. Obviously, children and young people are growing, you can't just have an absolute lose 50 per cent of body weight, but we can compare to normal growth charts. So we wanted outcomes for each individual and some payment element related to achieving a certain proportion of those outcomes. This is the overall conceptual model we came up with for the adult pathway. Broadly, this group are the increased need here, this group are the high need, and the very high need as well. People who are high need, we've thought they'd be referred into a lifestyle and weight management pathway, groups, perhaps two goes at that, following NICE guidance. And then again, we can identify who's been successful or not. Some of those might actually move on to the enjoying people who are at much higher need. And again, you can follow through, some lifestyle weight management groups, a specialist team, some might have drug treatment or not here, some success, in which case they still need some follow-up. If they're not successful, they might be, go for bariatric surgery, they might choose or not be suitable for that surgery. This element of the pathway, we needed to include, it's not in scope for the actual bid, but we've needed to include this in the modelling, A, to represent the whole service, integrated service, but B, because we become responsible for follow-up after two years. So that was, again, that was translating this model up here into what might actually happen to individuals. So we developed, adults and children, that overall conceptual pathway, based on the model that, the model on the page, if you like, that I was trying to go back to. And we needed to think about, rather than modelling the pathway, we needed to do some simulation. We decided to use Scenario Generator, a tool that Simulate, Claire's referred to and Simulate That's really for a few reasons. As Claire said, with her previous experience of using that tool, it's something, given tight time scales, I could pick up and be confident in using. But it's also a good tool for modelling strategic view of pathways. Other tools, you can look in very great detail at how many people you need to go through which clinic and how many streams of activity. For strategic use, Scenario Generator is very useful. As we'll see later, includes time elements, so you can say how long steps within a pathway might take, but also really useful for this, as we'll see, is timing system, so how long a person and an event takes to filter through the whole system. You can also loop systems, so unlike, say, Excel, you can actually have loops of people going back to an earlier part of the system and back through, so that's really useful. And as I said, the methodology behind this, the discrete event simulation, there's a close analogy to actually thinking about people moving through a system, that's very useful as well. And crucially for this, that you get access to the raw results data, you can take the results from the tool and then go away and work in Excel or other systems to actually develop that. And there's also a graphical approach, and as we'll see, pathways are mapped out and drawn out, so you can actually go to somebody and say, does this really happen? Does someone, how many people, how, what proportion of people do you expect to go on to this next step? Have we missed them out? It's a very accessible way to do it. Next slide, please, Claire. Okay, so that's the Scenario Generator adult pathway. I'll zoom in on a couple of areas. It's not too complicated, this one, looks a bit complicated actually, it's not one of the more complex ones that people use, but this is the whole of the adults' pathway on one slide. Next, please, Claire. So zooming in at the top of that, numbers come into this pathway at the start, this part at the top, and really split, as we said before, into people with my health needs, there's increased need, a high need and a very high need, and they take different routes through the pathway. Scenario Generator NICE, because where arrows split from each step, you can set what proportion go which way. But also the ovals on here, you can set weights, so for each step, you can say, we think events within that will take between a zero, a minimum amount of time, or a maximum amount of time, or follow different distributions. The weights as well, there could be weights between elements of care, either planned weights or system weights as well. So in quite a sophisticated way, you can build events, people flowing through systems, but also over time as well. And it's not all the very, it's not all very prescribed how long someone will take to get through, so there's a lot of flexibility now, you can model the systems. Okay, next slide, please. And then this is another zoom in on the pathway, looking at the bariatric surgery. So here, the triangle loop to the bottom right of the screen, was thinking about that two-year wait after bariatric surgery, and also, and then the leave bariatric follow-up is actually moving on to us being, as a local authority, being responsible. That's just one aspect of the whole pathway, so you can quite quickly build up from the evidence from NICE and other evidence, how many people move through the system. Sorry, can you just go back one, Claire? In here as well, you can see some that say successful weight loss, so we were modelling how many, what proportion at each stage we thought might actually be a successful weight loss, and therefore go on to receive that financial incentive that I mentioned as well. Okay, thank you. Can you do two now, and the next one? Thank you. So this is sort of the detail. So this is sort of the detail about the timing system, which was very useful. So each of those steps that I mentioned, some of them could last a few days, some a few months, some could be between four and eight months, and some steps even lasted years, so that post-bariatric surgery, someone could be in that step and cycling around for a couple of years. So we need to think about, if you build up multiple successful individuals out, routes out of the pathway endpoints, how will that phase the picture, how will that produce a phased picture over a period of years in terms of the number of successful clients that came through? Again, a very useful feature in Scenario Generator, actually lets you look at the time in system, so for any exit to the system, we call it the chart, and data about the, how long the events, that those events have been in the system. The next please, Claire. And a bit of geeky detail perhaps, but you can export data and at the top, and it comes out as distributions, but kind of hidden really, if you copy chart and then paste, that actually comes up with the numbers day by day, and that was invaluable for making the overall picture, because I could simply take the number, the number of each successful end of the pathway and then put those together in Excel. So next please, Claire. So we were able to ask questions like, if a thousand people start in month one of adults or children, what's the profile of how they might actually, A, be successful, or as in this case, actually be in the system? We realised that potential providers wanted to actually think about their capacity over time, even though we might pay them for each individual that came in, and then a bit extra if they were going to be successful or not, we needed to really warn providers that when the peaks and flows, peaks and troughs of activity and service use might be. So this was one example, a thousand people starting, this is how might it follow through? Or we could, on the right, we could say broadly, 60% of adults will be exiting by year one, 90% by the end of year two, there may be some others at year three and four. The next please, Claire. And then we could build that up into a, an overall picture for each of the exit discharges from the system, and also the successes as well. So this kind of picture emerged, where the adult peak of numbers and activity would peak in early year three, children and people would peak in early in year two, maternity was different because we wanted to increase the numbers throughout the life of the contract. And then, next please, Claire. But then we could give an overall phasing of the number of people in the system. And this was interesting, because depending on how much money we had to spend, the peak varied, so if we were spending more money on adults and children, and we had more money to put out the tender, they started to dwarf the maternity side, we actually had the peak of activity overall in year three. Providers found this really useful, mainly because they could, they were going to look at having flexible staff, and when the peak in activity for specialist treatment was needed, they could do that specialist treatment, that certainly in early in years one, two, and perhaps year four, if an earlier peak, they could redeploy their staff to do more of the preventative work. So this helped potential providers think about skill mix, staffing and contracting people. Next please, Claire. So in conclusion, the successful tender was awarded in December 2014, and the service went live from 2015. I think the modelling gave an assurance to OSAS commissioners to say, actually, this is a viable system. We can, we can have some assurance, some, really, yeah, assurance that what we're going out to tender with could work, yes, there are risks that actually, we've tamed some of those risks, we understand some of those risks in terms of the whole pathway approach. The provider who's succeeded certainly appreciates the detailed modelling. As I said, those flows over the longer term are very useful, and we can start to think about, as I mentioned earlier, the end of contract effects, what might, how many people might there be at the end of year four, when we're starting to think about re-tendering the whole process. And I think some of the risks become shared, so yes, the modelling won't be perfect, but no models are, but they're all useful. So in terms of sharing risk, commissioner and provider, it sets the scene for actually a good working relationship. Scenario Generator was a very useful tool in the modelling process. It's a very useful go-to tool in terms of modelling this kind of overall pathway. But as I said, as I said earlier, the demand for this service is going to far outstrip the resources available. The NICE guidance suggests that 1.1% of those in need could be treated each year. As it currently stands, we can afford to provide services to treat about 0.6% of the people who need the service, down to resources, but again, that can help people actually fight for more resources to provide these services. And as I said earlier, in the end, once you get beyond 1.53% of people who need, you start to make a dent on the overall profile of overweight and obesity prevalence. And that's the end of the presentation.
David, thank you so much. That was, that was so fascinating and really quite frightening as well, just to see that half, half of your population would be eligible for this pathway. I think it's quite a sobering message to anybody who's, well, the general public and people planning healthcare services and providing for them. And yeah, I think there's an awful lot in there, and I really do appreciate you sharing that with us. And we've had a couple of questions that have come in whilst you've been talking, are you happy to take those?
Yes, of course, yes.
Okay, thanks very much. So one, one question we had was, do you plan to follow this up and compare the results? So as you run the contract through, to compare your actuals with your model?
Yeah, the provider who's, who won the contract, they're quite keen to do that. We're early in the service being provided, so we can't do anything yet, but part of the spec was actually for them to provide to us an anonymised, row-level dataset, including intervention and successful outcome. That helps transparency of data generally, but also we can start to do service planning and equity audit, health equity audit, but as well as compare the modelling to what's actually happened. So yes, there is a plan to do that, and it's good, because so often we can't, we don't have the opportunity, we lose contact with providers, but they're keen to, and I think we'll take that forward.
Oh, that's, that's, that's good to know. Somebody was asking actually whether we were going to have a chance to watch the model running in the simulation.
We can do.
I think the difficulty is, I think we could have done that, but unfortunately, we lost the connection with David's computer halfway through, so actually the slides you're seeing are being run by another place. So, but maybe, maybe David, one of the things we might be able to do, I was thinking, is perhaps do a video or something and post that up, so that people can have a look.
We could do, the Scenario Generator models aren't very exciting to look at running, they're simulate models, sometimes you have animations moving through, but all you see is the screen with the pathway that I showed you, and then time ticking by, and then the numbers appear at the end, don't they, Claire? So it's not that exciting, but there's no reason why we couldn't do that.
Yeah, I'll certainly go back to the question and to see what we could do about that. So thank you for that one. Another question was, did you do any sensitivity analysis?
Yes, but limited on time really. We focused on some of the high-risk areas, so dependent on the budget, which we could secure, we ran two or three different models. The, and that was really down to a costing model, so again, the activity profile and success profile let us run a costing model in Excel using the results from the modelling process. So again, quite late on in the process, local authorities don't necessarily sign budgets early on, we were running with two or three different possible budget scenarios, and for each of those, we ran the costing model based on the anticipated numbers of successes or not. Scenario Generator's got built-in some sensitivity, so you can run a thing called trials, where the, each model runs several times for several years, and they all run slightly differently. It's a stochastic model, so it's got some sensitivity elements built in, but we focused on the areas of high risk or high uncertainty, so the proportion of successful clients coming out of specialist services, for instance, we only found one or two pieces of evidence for that. So we ran a couple of extreme scenarios, one at, say, 10%, one at 20%, so we've got an idea of the effect on the overall model. But sensitivity analysis, I think you can always do more, it's a judgment call as to what's actually going to be most useful and affect the results most of all.
Yeah, and yeah, that, that makes sense. And then I think this is probably the last question we've got time for, that's quite a big one. So somebody who's, who's taking on a similar project and wondered if you've got any tips on how to proceed?
Communication, I think, is one big thing. Some, I've worked with some people who think modelling can go on in a darkened room, you can come out with the answer and everything will be fine, that's it really. So there's something about finding subject experts, people who know their stuff, Anne in this case knows her policy area, she's been a clinician, she's done that real-life dietitian work out in the community, so she was invaluable, wouldn't have done any of this without someone like Anne. There's certainly something about thinking about the whole system, so we could have decided not to include the bariatric surgery elements, because it's out of scope, it's not our responsibility, actually, for lots of reasons. We needed to think about the numbers flowing through their system, A, because we picked them up later on, but B, because it's part of the whole system, and even a block at that stage, we might have needed to consider the backup effect, the backlog that that caused. Talked to clinicians, as I said, Anne was here for others, but we also talked to others to sense check, to cross-check different elements of the model. I think a big thing is use tools as appropriate, so any methodology, any tool, some people will say, again, this is the answer, this will solve all your problems, they're tools, they will use, use them with discretion. Keep talking to people, that's, that is a big thing, keep checking, cross-checking, modelling is a very iterative process, you start with one view, it moves on and develops. And I think from painful experience recently, I think there needs to be some modelling viewpoint in some of the big meetings with big decisions, A, either to give caveats and say, not sure if that's right, or that you can't stretch the modelling that far, or again, B, is a sense check to say, I don't think that actually makes sense, so yeah, don't shove us as models in a darkened room and a black box and expect the results to come out and be perfect. It's a, it's a communication, communicative process, and an evolving process that needs lots of input to make it work properly. Okay?
Yeah, no, that's, that's really, really helpful. David, thank you very much indeed.
Pleasure.
For this, really, really enjoyed it, and just to let people know that this will be posted up online, and to thank everyone for attending today, really great to have your input, and thank you for your questions. Let's, as always, let me know if there's any topics you'd like us to cover, people who've been doing simulations in areas that you'd like to know about. We'll be posting up these discussions on our Simulating Health LinkedIn group, and the answers that David has given, so you can refer to them later. And if anything occurs to you that you want to ask about, then please post that up on there, and I'm sure David will, will be happy to answer. So thank, thank you very much, great to talk to you, and we'll, we'll let you know when our next webinar is, which we're expecting to launch very soon. Thanks everyone, and goodbye.